Okay, it's seven o'clock, and I won't call this meeting to order. My name's on the agenda, but I'm not going to be chair. There was a mix-up because they did some switching over there, so Eric's going to be chair tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and I will assume the chair and bring the meeting to order. Request the clerk to call the room.
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Any additions to the agenda? I do have a request from Community Development to move items thirteen and fourteen, the ordinances with respect to Crane Alley, to the beginning of the meeting immediately after staff report, in order that the people who are here, you know, from the public, would not have to listen to us wade through everything else. Is there objection to that reordering of the agenda? Okay, it's done. And now, public input. I have one, let's see, I have two items at the, whoops, okay, I have just, I have one item from Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn Underwood. They remain concerned about the, do not wish to speak, but reiterate their concern about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. I have one item on the mental health and public safety. A person wishes to speak at the time of the item. And I have David Monk, who would like to speak, I believe now, on the rail trail potential of Bloomington to Mansfield.
Mount 115 North Market, Champaign. There's a closeout abandonment between Bloomington and Mansfield, it's about thirty miles. Potential rail trail, something the same as the Kickaboo Trail. It's the sort of thing that you have to gather public interest. It's in the region. It stops, the line is active from Champaign to Mansfield, and grain goes from Cargills down to Bementon North. North-Southern is closing this out. The bed has been unused since 2003. I know it's outside your jurisdiction, but Champaign County tends to use the counties around, and this is part of our network we're trying to get between Decatur and Danville and Monasello, and gradually get these things and join them together. There's a cost involved. The locals have to buy the bed, and then there's considerable amount of enhancement money, acquiring of titles, and bridges are preserved. So, I just wanted to let you know that I thought this was, in the downstate area, this is an important trail. It has a lot of prairie on it. Some of that prairie is adjacent to the road, so it has the potential to be widened, have a road widened into it, which is a little sad, a little bit alike out here. Some of it goes through from Farmer City to Bloomington through the field without having an adjacent road, and that has the potential to preserve the prairie that is on either side of the ballast. There's a lot of trees on it at the moment, but it's got recreational opportunity. It would be supportive for groups like Farmer City and Mansfield, and Bloomington already has a Constitution Trail, which is very good, so I'd like to support that. And coming up too, I think it's in the Zoning Board of Appeals, is an events center on the Barnhart Farm at the end of Flower Road, and I find that, I'm very positively in support of that. They've put in a prairie, it's not a remnant prairie, it's a reconstruction prairie, but it could be very helpful. The state is down to, Jack White would say, .01 percent of remnant prairie has been saved by the state. So this is something that I would like to support too. Thank you very much.
Yes, yeah, Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, David, we actually didn't object to the proposals related to the prairie, the Barnhart Prairie.
Yes, I think that was...
That was, we've already dealt with that at the city council, so we've already sent our opinion on to the county board.
Okay.
So, and encouraging it. And then, have you spoken with the folks on, the club that sponsors, that does a lot of work on the Constitution Trail and/or the Bloomington Normal City folks about the rail?
Yes, they have asked me about it too, and I will be speaking at the Prairie State Conservation Coalition, this meeting on Thursday and Friday, at the Staff Rock State Park. But there's a Parkland Foundation that does very well at putting this sort of stuff together, and I hope that they might be a lead person. Railroads will not, they want one group to do the buying, and you're in competition with farmers all the way along, because it's extra corn and soybeans if you take the ballast out.
Right, but this is, this is, this is the, this falls into the right category, like the Kickaboo Rail Trail, where you can, where a group can buy it and land bank it?
Yes, it's a rail banking act where you apply to the rail bank. You have a short window to apply for a rail banking act, and what it does, it saves the railroad bed for future railroad...
And what are the deadlines on that?
I don't know, but it's obvious, it's been advertised in the Pandograph Newspaper, so it's on its way, and you have to do it reasonably quickly, and you have to know that the money will be there.
Okay, okay, if you find out the date, let me know, and I'll also contact people I know in Bloomington Normal.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Pressing.
I have a question for you, David. On the Kickaboo Trail, part of that was the route that Lincoln used to ride, the Eighth Circuit, so is there any of that on this one that you're talking about?
Well, it...
Any historic connections to Lincoln? Because that makes it easier to get the money.
I assume so, because Lincoln had friends in Bloomington, and yes, we do have, the Lincoln Trail here is not on the Kickaboo Trail, it's about five miles to the south.
Right.
And I assume something the same will go, it would be more like on 150 rather than on the railroad bed, but yes, we look for adjunct space which is interesting outside the trail, and yes, Lincoln's...
Do you know that there was, that was a route that Lincoln used to take, or not?
No, not for sure, but I would assume so.
Okay, thank you.
And Bloomington is kind of an older town, and they have a lot of history that would relate. Farmer City is also in here, and that's at the top end of the Lincoln, the Clinton Power Plant Lake, and so there's some riparian interest in that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Whoops, I let myself get distracted. So, next item is staff reports, if there are any at this time?
No, there's a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, there's presentation. Body cameras and whistleblowing, I believe Mr. Ammons initiated this, so would you like to introduce the speaker?
Yes, I would. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, to the right, not to the left. So, listen, I met Mr. Belcourt here back when I was working on information or around issues with people with felony convictions. He does a lot of work on second chance opportunities, as well as currently the role that he's playing as a lecturer at the University of Chicago Law School, and an advocate for issues of transparency. So, once I spoke with him recently up in Springfield, and told me some of the work that he was doing at this current time, so I thought I'd invite him here, give him some of the things that we're dealing with here in the city of Urbana. So, Todd Belcourt.
Thank you, council member. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and Chairman Jacobson, and honorable members of the committee as a whole. My name is Todd Belcourt, and I do advocacy nationwide on issues of transparency, justice reform, and second chances. And Councilmember Ammons asked I share a couple words of my thoughts of some of the best practices I've come to become aware of by being a part of the Police Convoy Task Force in Chicago, but also working with the Department of Justice as they try to root out what they decide to be the best practices, to make sure we have the most effective policing throughout the nation. And two measures that are relating to that, that I'd like to speak about, one is labeled whistleblower, but I think it's oversimplification of it. I think it's really a matter of a good government bill. And the other, what we're talking about a little bit more, is relating to the institutional body cams. So I'll spend a couple minutes on each, and of course, make myself available for questions, and don't hesitate to interrupt. I've argued cases in the court, no judges, and people of your ilk feel, don't wait, I'm here to be of service. The whistleblower idea is really just basic good government one-on-one. It's providing two clear messages to the public, one being that it demonstrates the council's intent to address any perceived or actual impropriety that may be in all of government, not just a particular unit. And what it also does, it's much more specific, it provides a clear vehicle to deter and actually address any impropriety. And what that means specifically, that means affirmative ways for people to discuss and say, you know, I saw Todd doing something that's formal misconduct, and a mechanism for they to report that misconduct, and also receive affirmative protections if they're worried about retaliation as a result of that misconduct, such that they can be protected, but also so that everyone can play a role in ensuring that the people who are serving the folks in our communities are doing so the most faithful way, in a way that's most full of integrity. What we've seen in terms of what this looks like in places like Chicago and St. Louis, neither of which are bastions for, you know, corruption-free city council, that has done a lot to not just change public opinion, because they do know that people are being rooted out, but also provides a lot of ways for independent auditors and the like to hold people accountable for doing the wrong things. And it's important to consider that as a measure here, and that's something, I guess, in the narrow context of having a subject matter hearing about it, something that'd be wonderful for a city like Urbana that is growing, that is dealing with the issues, make sure it's putting its best foot forward in terms of indicating to the general public that you're putting the best servants before them as well. The second item relates specifically to body cams, which I know is a fiscal issue, and I want to speak more specifically to both aspects of that, but first, let's start with the benefits of it. And also, let me say, just as a disclaimer, I do not represent anyone selling body cams, nor do I intend to. I just do understand that this is considered widely, when used appropriately, a best practice. And the reasons why, because it does a few things that are really important to highlight. One, I have two police officers in my family that are, that, two of my brothers are police officers, I have a cousin's police officer as well. This is also important for officer safety. What this means, people act better when they know they're on camera. I'll act less silly, I may not dance as wildly when I'm on camera, but you know, it's important for people to know that, that this is officer safety issue as well. Another thing is, it relieves administrative burdens. Right now, people may file complaints with the idea of putting what they call "bad paper" on good cops, to try to make it so people have to go through a lot of rigmarole and defend a lot of charges that may be all spurious, and this gets to the bottom of that really quickly. But I think another important thing, especially in Urbana, as I've done the research on some of the unique issues that are here, it helps cops be more effective, and it helps them hold abusers accountable. That's, from what I've read, that's the number one issue that you deal with here in Urbana, the issue of domestic violence and the like, and it makes it a lot easier when you have what's considered the best evidence, actual, on-the-scene, devoid-of-stress evidence of the actual scene of what's going on, to ensure you can account for someone's reactions, someone's wounds, someone's bruises, their demeanor when you encounter them, and you're responding to a call. And this provides a mechanism to make sure we can root out some of those issues. Another issue is, when you get in a car crash, something like, you get, and this gets to the bottom all the he said, she said stuff. You have something on the scene, it provides all the necessary evidence, supplementary evidence to assist the prosecutor in the process, and those are some of the benefits in terms of making your police department even more effective. Now, you also have issues of, it also helps making sure the police officers are doing what you're asking them to do. If you have a protocol, if you've got some implicit bias training, whatever it may be, this may be an additional reminder to them as they go to approach an individual, a suspect or whatever it may be, you know, am I doing anything to treat this person, approach this person differently based on their appearance? And anytime you have the opportunity to have that sort of reminder, these body cams are one of the best forms of that, because you know that everything you're doing is being chronicled. And to the extent that you all want to tailor how these are used, the way that's the most effective based on the needs of your community, you have the wherewithal within both the whistleblower notion and also body cams to determine what that looks like. You determine what's improper governmental action, you determine the means by which and the disciplinary schemes available, but also on the body cams end, you determine when people turn them on. You don't have to have them on all day to yield that significant cost, you can only make sure that they're on at the moment where they leave a sufficient distance from their car, so they can only chronicle the personal interaction, so that it does provide a nuanced view of a conversation that you won't get from a car squadron. Or you can make sure that you just have a pilot program. You try this on a smaller basis, and make sure that it works in a smaller cadre of individuals who may be at the forefront of law enforcement, going to households, or dealing with some of the heaviest traffic stops, whatever, if you have checkpoints or whatever that may be, and see how it works. But I think the bottom line is, this has been seen as a best practice when properly implemented. And there are places of, you know, similar population that have been able to implement at a reasonable cost. Chester County Sheriff, they had twenty officers outfitted for sixteen thousand, and you also had entities that had, you know, the storage costs of it really ramps things up, and you've had other entities where fifty cameras were costing about sixty-seven thousand, and a hundred and eleven thousand was spent over two years to store. So what that looks like in practice, you have that one-time fee of buying the equipment and the actual cameras, and then the annual cloud footage or whatever it be to store all this stuff, but you determine how much you store. So that determines which sort of package you need and all that stuff, I presume. But more importantly, as you endeavor to figure out how to be the most effective police department, rather be adding more police, which I know is a consideration, or making sure the police officers you have are relieved of some of the stress of having to deal with, you know, repeat offenders and/or issues of police safety, to deal with the stress they deal with, camera's been a wonderful way to deal with that as well. With that, I open myself to any questions or thoughts you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Belcourt. I think the big issue for me is the cost of storing the data. What are the recommended lengths of time now for keeping the data, and how are people dealing with FOIA requests to have access to the data that comes off of that camera? What's that, what's that part of the cost?
Yeah, you know, I've seen the cost range from everything, like in, when you're dealing with a place like Florida, where they have a lot more issues of excessive use of violence and force, you've got issues there where they're actually charging on a per capita basis, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand for, per year, to manage something like this, and that's a lot of money, but when you think about that for a hundred centry police officers, then it becomes more manageable when you think about the yearly cost, because then it becomes, you know, you're paying about a thousand per officer, per, but on a bit larger scale than things, you can actually control that cost in multiple factors, not just by how many police officers actually have the body cam, but also what sort of interactions you'd like them to chronicle. If it's every time you have a stop, if it's every time you respond to a certain type of call, it's every time you're in a certain neighborhood and you're engaged in a certain sort of tack team response. So you cannot control the, not just amount of content, but also, as you're mentioning, how do people access it? That's another form of cost. Who administers this? Who responds to FOIA requests? Do you have an open forum where it's openly accessible? Do you have a means or review before you provide access to it? All those are concerns that have been brought to bear by good entities like the ACLU, as, you know, best practices that they want locally to be determined, but also, more importantly, they recognize the value and the importance of having this sort of transparent mode of communication. So, when you consider things like that, that's actually something you all can decide and control, a lot of those fluctuating costs. Now, you don't need to have twenty-four-hour or full-shift-long body cam, obviously you don't need to see officers eating and cutting up amongst themselves, but certainly, especially in towns where you're responding, where your number one concern is responding to domestic violence incidents, and you have, you know, over three thousand calls, is what I saw, in a year-long period relating to those sorts of issues, that may be an instance, along with maybe instance where you deal with someone as a forcible felony accusation, whatever that may be, to make sure that police officers are protected, but also you're getting the best evidence possible.
Yeah, so specifically, then, that the FOIA piece is, are departments having to basically dedicate a staff member to dealing with and processing the FOIA requests and reviewing the video and to release it and that sort of thing?
From what I've seen, the best practice is to dedicate someone not just to that aspect, but to tagging the footage. As you may know, by doing anything in, you know, social media and the like, it's not just stockpiling, you want to make sure you can easily access it. So you don't want to just say, you know, Officer Belcourt, let me look at all his interactions between this date and this date. You can, but it'll also be helpful for the purposes of learning from the actual data you're collecting. How many calls are we getting relating to domestic violence? This may be a quicker way to figure that out. How many issues are we getting related into the use of force? This may be a quick way to figure that out. So having someone on the scene who can handle all these duties in a tech context, they don't need to be a police officer, if someone doesn't even need to be full-time. It could be someone who just responds to these things on a contract basis, or brings calls of data as it comes in and tags it accordingly. That may be the best way to handle it. So you have not just, you know, a terabyte of data, but you have something that's actually very useful in terms of determining whether there's spaces where you can improve your protocol, spaces you can prove ways in which officers interact with people, but also determine the efficacy of even having this at all.
Mayor Pressing.
So what is the typical length that the footage is kept?
When you have officers interact with people, it could be anywhere from five minutes to thirty minutes, depending on the nature of the call.
No, I mean the storage. How long is, after the incident, is it typically?
Oh.
Because it could be a while before somebody files a complaint, so what is the sort of an industry standard?
That's right. Generally, this information is housed under the same area and statute as maybe any conduct that police may be...
So is it permanent?
...consisted review for? Well, it depends on what the jurisdiction. It could be four years, it could be ten years, it could be five years, but all that can be legislated.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Dennis, yes, Mr. Roberts.
Do you know how many municipalities are currently using body cams on police forces?
You know?
Illinois.
Oh, in Illinois alone, ah. I know it's over sixty nationwide, and it's something that a lot of people are pursuing grants from the federal government to support, but I actually need to get the Illinois numbers. I know neighborhood like Champaign, Carros Street, they're thinking about implementing these in the same, for same reasons. Larger municipalities, certainly, a lot of, there was something of, within state law where they had this being, being, if you're going to do it, they'll provide certain supports, but also some guidance on how to do it correctly. So, no, but I can answer that question, and I can get that information for you though.
So you're saying that there's going to be some state guidance as well, guidelines coming down the...
Well, there actually, yeah, that's right. There already has been in, as of the last General Assembly, and so it's already a current law for folks who are considering, who have these, like, you know, how to use them in terms of making sure that if you intentionally try to disrupt the use of it to avoid, you know, chronicling any evidence that may put yourself in a bad light, that's a penalty. There are also issues relating to, if you just fail to wear it at all, if you're just not abiding by protocol, it kind of folds into the general thought of, this is an expectation of officers, if it becomes an expectation on the force level. But these are only regulations that bind those who have it. If you don't have it, it doesn't relate to you. And the whole point is, I think, is they want chiefs of police and otherwise to find ways to use this to enhance their effectiveness, and that makes them more difficult for them to do their job.
Maybe I might, if I could ask, I don't know if you want to say publicly, but if we asked you off, you know, out of public, for particular cities that you think are really models for how they do body cams, I assume that that would be available?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that information, and I'll provide, there's some examples, I think, you know, Philadelphia, they've come a long way in terms of what they've done. I think the mayor of New York, they're going to come down and talk at the Chicago City Club this Friday, talk about the amazing success they've had with implementing this properly. But when you start getting to the smaller cities, it's, then it becomes, I think, the importance of having a pilot program, something like that, to see how effective it is for you, because you don't have the same, you know, five-hundred-million-dollar litigation costs you're dealing with on the back end, but you do have the concerns, legitimate ones, of solving the day-to-day crimes and holding people accountable in a way that's more effective for you here.
If I may ask a question about the other part of your presentation, and this is the whistleblowing. And so that's, that's actually, without going into any details, wouldn't be appropriate, but it's been an issue for our city, is how do we, if an employee has a problem, that might be a legitimate problem with the city, how do we, how do we protect that person's rights, deal with the problem, adjudicate that? Is there, are there model policy documents or model ordinances that would give us some guidance on that?
Yeah, I think the strongest example of such a model ordinance was something that just passed in St. Louis, and it really provides different mechanisms based on the nature of the conduct you're trying to report. I mean, certainly if I'm saying my superior is an issue, that's not the person I would then go to, to confront about the issue. If it's such gravity, that could result in serious bodily harm to me. So it creates other mechanisms, whether it be there may be an auditor, or some independent individual who's tasked with inspector general, whatever it may be, based on the locality, who has authority then to investigate these sorts of things and keep that person's identity confidential, to protect them. But to the extent that it's impossible to divorce the confidentiality of that person to the investigation, also giving them the power to provide affirmative protections, to make sure that they are protected. What this may look like, for example, if I see one of my police department counterparts are doing something nefarious, and they're stealing money from people who, even if they may be drug dealers, and were to keep them quiet or whatever it may be, and I want to report that, that could result in significant bodily harm in response, and a person may threaten my life in return. So what are we doing to provide protections for those people? So it provides the same entity that has authority to then investigate these claims and these concerns with the purse, so to speak, so this does come with some costs in some regards, to provide reasonable accommodations for people who are trying to root out these issues. But of course, I mean, when you're talking about having a governmental entity that runs with integrity, there are costs to that, to making sure it runs cleanly, but it's better to pay those costs than to deal with whatever issues you may have down the line, or the discomfort the general public may have with the people because they're concerned about that.
Okay, so one of the keys is having somebody outside the city itself, yeah, deal with the investigation and so forth.
That's right. Generally, if I were to put it together, I would recommend something in a budget that can't be changed or altered by any elected authority, that would be used and reserved that may be a bipartisan, or maybe based on the population here, of whoever you think may be the most representative of all the different populations, and have those people select somebody to be the independent voice that can then root out some of their stuff to make sure they're not wed to anybody, but also they don't think they're going to lose their job or be dealt with differently because they're calling people out for doing the wrong thing.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Marlin?
Are there any cities where body cams have been used long enough to actually measure the effectiveness of the cameras?
Yes.
In some of these areas that you mentioned?
No, for sure. I mean, I was looking at some data here, actually, I don't have the state on here for some reason, but I'd have to look at that, but there's one place for certain, and I actually have the link to the data, where the police officers, the complaints against police officers fell eighty-eight percent over a twelve-month period.
Fell eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight percent.
Where was that?
Yes, so that's why I have got it on the Justice and Policing Reform's website, so I'll pull that up as I'm talking, because it is important to get that state. But the fact that that could possibly be an outcome, in terms of, you can easily imagine how much money that would save in terms of time spent on administrative costs. And it certainly has to be a significant jurisdiction to have that sort of a drop-off, but I'll look it up as I speak, and I am sorry for not having that notated. Pennsylvania is my guess, but I don't want to guess on something that important, so I'll just look it up as we speak.
I guess I'd be looking for cities more like the size of Urbana, at least under a hundred thousand.
Well, that, I don't think this would be relating to this, but I'll, still, I'll figure out the exact answer to that for you right now, because I do have the citation here.
Thanks.
But I just don't have the actual city.
Yeah, I think it, the paper, I think I found it in preparation for this meeting, "The Effect of Police Body-Warmer Cameras on Use of Force in Citizens' Complaints Against the Police," does that sound like the title?
That sounds like one of the additional resources. This is Justice and Policing, Police Reform's, Community Control. So, but it is certainly a salient point, and that's why I opened by saying, sometimes in this case, a pilot may make more sense, you can see whether or not it's effective for the level of conduct that you're trying to protect or perceive is the value.
Okay, any further questions?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Ammons.
So, I know that in speaking with several people about this, I'm seeing a growing support from police officers for body cameras. Is that your experience, Todd, or not?
Yeah, absolutely, because as I mentioned at the outset, that not only is this good for officer's safety, but it's also, generally, people act better. So you have fewer instances of people dealing with the police improperly, but also exonerates police officers when people make complaints that are false... So you have fewer instances of people dealing with the police improperly, but also exonerates police officers when people make complaints that are, that are falsely filed. So I think that's one of the reasons why people are generally in favor of it, even though they may initially have consternation because they recognize the overall benefit to not just the safety, but the ability to be effective as police officers.
I don't have any.
Mr. Madigan.
So I just want to say, I appreciate your presentation. I think it's very interesting and appreciate you, your willingness to be a resource to the city of Urbana. I just want to remind everyone that the chief of police and in fact, I think pretty much everyone on the council has been supportive of the concept of body cameras and what their worth could be to the community as a whole and to the police department. But I think, you know, on, on past occasions, the, the concern has been the administrative burden and how we overcome that. So I think you could be a very good resource in helping us to identify communities who do have more experience in the, kind of the back office function of these body cams, i.e. archiving. I don't want to use the word editing, that wouldn't be appropriate, but certainly there is redaction that has to occur to protect identities of folks and that kind of thing and FOIA requests. You know, there are those kind of issues that, that take, could take an inordinate amount of time. So I understand that there might be a benefit on the other side administratively that you brought up tonight that I hadn't really thought about, about people act better. So there may be less complaints brought forth, so less staff time devoted to defending against complaints like that. But then on the other side, there is the whole idea of having to go through the video and decide what to keep and decide what not to keep. And gee, did we not keep something that later will come back to haunt us? What's, you know, what, what are, what are the, what's the downside of that? So do we keep it all just in case or, you know, how do we pick and choose? I mean, I think those are, those kind of parameters have to be really clearly laid out upfront. It can't be an opinion type of thing, you know, it has to be a really kind of a checklist. We bang through the checklist, these are the kind of things we keep, these are the kind of things we don't. But I could see how this could be tremendous administrative expense in terms of time and money. But I, I also think we need to figure out how to overcome that because I think these are a very positive thing for the police force and for the community. So thanks for your presentation.
Thank you. And I was able to call that information that I was talking about previously. It was just a 2012 study, so that was actually considering cameras in Rialto, California.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience with that.
Yeah, just along the lines of the cost and certain evaluation of all the different systems, presumably the companies that provide the camera have some sort of video asset management software that comes with that, or you could buy with that as part of the package that would do some of that tagging and retrieval function. And I was wondering, I know that Champaign's looked at several different systems and done some evaluations. I'm sure a lot of other cities have done that. So wondering if there's one that, anything that your group has put together as far as kind of a consumer reports of these different systems, somehow evaluate them easier? And then secondly, if there's any sort of efforts among nonprofits or federal agencies to do any sort of open source development of that kind of video management software?
Two good questions. And no, I've actually made as little effort as I can to create, so I don't want to be recommending anything one way or another. I want to just give as information as impartially as I can. And in terms of open sourcing though, I think, I think it's a great idea. I mean, you could have, especially if you had a school next door that prides itself on its engineering, why not have them have a hack on this? Where they spend time figuring out what's the most efficient way to deal with the data mining in this regard? If you have police reports that come in that already articulate, you know, all this information, how, how do you simplify that into some data dump where it can be done in, in less than thirty seconds per, per report? And you don't get enough arrests, you know, around here, thank God, where you have to worry about that on a wide-scale basis. So you could have even interns do that very quickly and mitigate all those costs and also give them really significant experience in terms of what they're doing to help their city.
If only we had something like a National Center for Supercomputing Applications. Oh, we do. Yes, Mr. Evans.
So I know we're going to wrap up here and move on with the agenda, but again, thanks Todd for, for traveling up to, to be a resource for us. I do think that our role, and I was hoping to have a very lively discussion so that anybody get your questions out now, any concerns, because I plan to bring this back and to a more concrete form for us to, to take action on or to vote on at some point. But I want us to hammer out some of these concerns that we might have. I know the chief and others have spoke pretty openly about body cameras. And I know that we can, we can be creative when we need to find money. So I think that we could definitely look at this and see exactly how we could make it happen, even if it was in a pilot program. And the, but I do look at the, some of the things that you, that you laid out, Mike, as, you know, I think that if Todd or anyone else is able to provide us with a checklist, some of the things that we're going to have to hammer out with some of these questions, though I think we can do internally. And I love the idea of partnering with the U of I. I mean, we have on the agenda later on tonight, a partnership with the university to do some particular work. So if the, the push is there, if the support from the council is there, I think that we can move forward to make this happen. I didn't hear many comments from anyone, from most of you about the, the best practices from the whistleblower piece. I would assume that most people are okay with what was presented then? Okay.
Well, you heard from me.
So again, Todd, thanks a lot. If you had any, anything else you wanted to respond to?
Also worth adding that ACLU has spent time identifying what they believe do best practices in this regard. I know of council member Brown has a relationship with them. So there may be a checklist already available that I could try to pull up and send to you certainly by the end of the day. But I know they spent time studying what the parameters of a reasonable system could look like. And that may be a resource to draw upon.
Yeah, there are lots of whistleblower statutes already in effect. This is nothing new. So yeah, I wasn't even aware, we didn't have one, honestly. But you know, another thing to keep in mind in whistleblower statutes too is, is protection for the accused. There ought to be, there ought to be some kind of swift ensure penalty for false accusations. That needs to be something that's always a part of a whistleblower statute is it can't be in retribution for a disgruntled employee to, to act out against a supervisor inappropriately, you know, so.
Sure.
There needs to be some kind of penalty for bad behavior in that regard as well. But yeah, there are tons of whistleblower statutes that have been in effect for decades.
I think I, did I see Ms. Marlin, I wanted to say something, no? Okay, I'm not seeing any other requests for attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time and attention, I appreciate it.
Before we, before we move forward, I did get one more request to address the council from a member of the public. And I guess I would be inclined, even though the public input has gone by, to, to honor this one if it's with agreement from the council. And so this is Mr. Rick Sturts.
Hello, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. It seems like in this day and age, you hear so many negative things about the, you read in the paper, you look online or radio, whatever. There just seems to be so much, you hear all the bad things about the police department. They never write the good things, you know? I live in southeast Urbana, south, about as far as you can get. And I had a situation, I had a sister that was in the Champaign County nursing home that one day, she's all better now and she's home, so she's out of there, all healed up. But one day, January thirtieth of this year, she decided, it was fifteen degrees out, and she decided she was going to walk home to Rantoul. And of course, the nursing home, it's not a jail. And they said, well, she was okay, her faculty seemed okay, and there's nothing they could do to get her back. So they called me immediately and they said, well, she's walking past the desk right now. And I said, well, do me a favor, let me, I live over by Myers, I said, do me a favor and let me get over there, try to hold her up till I get there. Well, by the time I got there, just, I don't know how she did it, ten minutes, she had walked from the nursing home, chose not to fill out the, leaving the forms and all that to leave, which they were trying to get her to do to hold her up. So by the time I got there, I looked, I just happened to look to my left, I was pulling into the nursing home and looked down there toward Main Street, and there she is with her little stroller and had her hood on and just real frail. This girl was like, she was under a hundred pounds at the time. And she was going and hitting it. And so I pulled over, you know, pulled my truck over and got out and tried to stop her. I couldn't stop her. I'm her brother, been her forever, you know, and usually she listens to me and she was just dead set, I am not going back. And she, the sister that she lives with in Rantoul couldn't, she's the point, they couldn't take care of her, you know? She needed medical needs and things like that that she couldn't do. So it turned out the nursing home had called nine-one-one just to make sure she was okay. And it got to the point, we really got in a heated argument out there in the fifteen-degree weather, which I underdressed for. But so anyway, I, I told her, I said, you know, here's your choice. I said, either go back there right now or I'm, I'm calling nine-one-one. And I held my phone up right in front of her and dialed nine-one-one. And, and I'll tell you what, from that moment on, it just, everything changed, not with her, but I got ahold of MetCAD, the people at MetCAD were just absolutely incredible. They had me stay on the phone and they said, we have an officer coming out. And I want to mention his name, got it written down here, because like I said, I thought about writing a thank you letter and then all I could think of was, you know, if I write a thank you letter, only about two or three people are going to see that. And I thought, well, you know, if I talk to you people, it's going down on record as me thanking and by golly, at least more than two or three people are hearing it. So the officer's name that was sent out was Officer Cassidy and his badge number was three-one-four. And, and a little while later, a couple county deputies came out, which I'm going to the county board meeting to thank them also. But it just amazed me from the moment that man got there. I have never seen such a compassionate individual, caring, professional. He went to my sister and, you know, he patted her on the back and he was telling her, he said, honey, you, you can't walk to Rantoul. He said, we're going to find you frozen to death in a ditch. Or you're gonna, when you're crossing the road with your little walker, you're going to cause a traffic accident. You know, somebody's going to swerve to miss you and hit another car maybe, you know? So after talking with her, you know, I've been talking to her for, oh, almost forty-five minutes and couldn't make any headway. This man, I don't know how he did it, but he talked to her for about ten minutes maybe at the most. And by golly, he convinced her to get in the car and, and he took her back to the nursing home where she stayed. And like I said, that was January thirtieth. And between then and now, she just actually went home Friday permanently, hopefully. She's really improved and all that. But the point I'm making is it was just, they were so helpful and you hear so many negative things, you know? And I just, it's really important for me, like I said, I'm, and I'm even going to the MetCAD, their meeting and thanking them. It just really, and it's not just me, it's my entire family, you know, wants to thank the city of Urbana Police Department for having such caring and professional individuals. And there's been times I've even like gone to the gas station or something, there might be an officer there and I've struck up a conversation. And everybody I've ever met, it seems like that they're really professional, really nice. But this Officer Cassidy, he went above and beyond what he had to do. You know, I'm sure there were, I had even mentioned to him, I said, I bet there's other emergencies you need to go to rather than this. And you know what that man told me? He said, well, this is an emergency. You know, you got this lady that's frail, I, I do believe she was like eighty-five pounds at the time. And it just amazed me how, how professional he was, how great it was, and everything turned out really good. And so that's really all I wanted to say, just wanted to thank Officer Cassidy and make it publicly known that wonderful man, just incredible. He went above and beyond the emotional things that he had to do. And then just real quick, one more thing, like I said, I live in southeast Urbana and we all, we're all aware of what's going on down there. And I've noticed in the past several months, a lot more patrols. And I've noticed the patrols are, they haven't talked to me yet, but I've seen them, my neighbors. I've got a lot of elderly, elderly neighbors that I try to help out and take care of. I've got about six of them, I guess, I always check on. And I've got one, one neighbor that I saw the officer just, he was driving by and just hit the brakes, the guy was out in his yard. And he just, you know, struck up a small, short conversation with him and took off. And I asked him, I said, well, what was that all about? You know, he said, nothing, he just wanted to say hi and, you know, make his presence known. And so I just want to thank the powers that be for, you know, we got more patrols. I just absolutely love my neighborhood. Mayor, I think I've seen you walking on my sidewalks before and waved at you and all that, but, and talked to you. But it's a beautiful neighborhood, you know, and I hate to see, you know, the problems we're having are like about six or seven blocks north of us. So we're really concerned about that because everybody in my neighborhood, you know, like I said, they're all retired, elderly. And so we, I've talked to all of them about it and they're all concerned, but then when I brought it up, and they've noticed more patrols. And it just takes that, you know, when you're, when you're elderly and you're living alone, you got all that stress of, you know, they're worried about who's going to break into my house or who's going to get me or, you know? And a lot of times that's uncalled for, they don't really need to worry about that, but they do. That's what they worry about. And so, you know, I talk to them all the time and everybody is really happy seeing the extra patrols coming down the street. So that's about all I got to say.
Yeah, Mayor Pressing wanted to.
Well, I want to thank you for coming to tell us this. Our officers are trained in crisis intervention and we owe a lot to the Police Training Institute at the University of Illinois because they, they train officers very well and we have an excellent police department. But it's a long chain, starting with the training and then the atmosphere, the, you know, the, the way they are taught. They go back for more training, but also the atmosphere in the city is respect for people.
It was incredible how they treated her. I mean, like I said, I argued, she, my sister and I argued with her for forty-five minutes. He came and he got her back in ten. So it's really, the training's really.
We could have crisis intervention training for civilians too. And some cities are doing that.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, it was, maybe I need to hit one. But it was just, like I said, I can't say enough good things about it. And I've really noticed a big difference, you know, in the patrols and like I said, they just blew me away with the way he talked to my sister. So thank you all very much and thank the Urbana Police Department and really important for me to say that.
Mr. Brown.
Thanks for coming, Rick. We went to school together.
Yes, we did.
I thought I recognized you sitting right there. I didn't recognize you without your guitar. Are you playing anywhere?
I, not now, I played fourteen years down in Florida, professional, but got arthritis and that was the end of that.
All right, well, good to see you.
Yeah, good seeing you. I appreciate it, everybody. Thank you so much. I think you're all doing a great job. I watch it every time on the TV, so I thought, you know what, that's right down the road, I'm going in there tonight.
All right.
I finally made it.
Thank you very much.
I've got a few other meetings to do some thank yous at, so. But again, appreciate it so much and I think the Urbana Police Department's one of the best around, I really do.
Okay.
All right, you guys take care, thank you much.
Okay, next we have staff report or reports. Are there staff who should be reporting out to us at this time? Oh, Mayor Pressing.
Just an update, we did the resolution encouraging the Police Training Institute to stay at the University of Illinois. And the county passed a similar one last Thursday. So this is part of just a campaign to get people aware of the gem that we have here and how valuable it is to all of us. And I think that the problems that they've had in Chicago, they've attributed that to lack of good training. And maybe the people who do the training in Chicago should come here so that we can train the trainers. I think that would be a good thing. that would be a good thing.
Okay. Now, moving on to Resolution 2017-01-003R, and we do have a, a person from the public who wished to address us at this, at the time of this agenda item. Oh, I'm sorry, we're moving items thirteen and fourteen up. Excuse me. Thank you for keeping my head in the right place. So, the next item, ordinance number 2017-02-010, and ordinance approving redevelopment agreement with Downtown Creations LLC Crane Alley West. And, I think perhaps that this and the next item will be presented at the same time from community development.
Thank you. As Eric alluded to, I'll speak to the budget amendment item as well. The city was approached by Downtown Creations LLC. Scott Glassman of Crane Alley is here tonight, as is Aron Goldberg of the Canopy Club and Ian Goldberg of the Canopy Club. Their proposal is for a full interior renovation of 119 West Main Street to create a New Orleans-inspired nightclub that's going to be centered on local music, and they're planning to call the business Blackbird. This renovation will also extend into Fish Alley and create a festive atmosphere out there. The interior renovation is budgeted at approximately $220,000 with a later future phase for an indoor mezzanine and outdoor balcony that's been estimated $165,000. In addition, they're planning to make right-of-way improvements in Fish Alley at a cost of approximately $15,000 to provide for the space for the extension of the public beer gar, or the beer garden into the public right-of-way. Those two first phases, the interior renovations and the exterior activation of the alley, are expected to be completed by April fifteenth, or at least that's the hope by the developer. And the future phase, ideally, will happen in the next couple of years. The total private investment for the project would be about $400,000, of which, a maximum of 23% or $92,000 would be reimbursed per this proposed development agreement. The project is expected to result in the reactivation of a vacant storefront, a storefront that's, I guess historically, we've had difficulty maintaining a restaurant in, in this location, and it's going to, again, create that engaging space and, off of Fish Alley, which will more or less connect to the already very popular Crane Alley. Both the activation of public space and strengthening of economic activity in the downtown area are goals of the 2012 Downtown Plan. If fully realized, the project is expected to generate approximately $165,000 in local tax revenue over a ten-year period. Those new revenues are expected to exceed the value of incentives offered under the full agreement within a period of six years. And over a ten-year period, the project is expected to yield a return on investment of 104%, and that assumes a 5% discount rate. Staff is recommending approval of the agreement and the corresponding budget amendment, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay. Ms. Marlin.
Well, first of all, I'm happy to see a renovation of the interior, interior of that space. I think that's what's been one of the major problems in the past, is no matter what you had in that, that store, it looked the same. So, this is, this is a really good thing. The other question I had is, and I was over there today trying to visualize all this, what's the connection between your balcony outside and the parking deck? Can people get from the top, is there, is there a connection?
Well, there's an existing connection between those buildings that is existing, and it goes into the second-story office space. So, the entire building here extends all the way to the dentist's office. So, I believe it's, what, 119 through 125 West Main. And, that property is owned by Mike Hosier. So, this tenant space on the first floor does not currently connect to the parking sp, to the parking lot, and I do not believe that's included in the proposal for the balcony. It would just be a stairwell access from the alley.
Okay. It shows that, one of the pictures shows a walkway. It looks like it comes from the...
Yes. And, and that is existing, that, that walkway does exist, but...
From the second level of the parking deck?
That's correct.
Okay.
But it connects to the, the second-floor office portion of the building.
Oh, so it doesn't connect to the balcony. Okay.
Yeah, and it's a little bit west of, of this tenant space. Yeah, and to be clear, the, you know, the, the portion, the pictures of the exterior and the, the alley area extend, you know, pretty much the entire width of the property, whereas they're only occupying one interior tenant space, which is really the easternmost part of the property. So, yeah, there's a potential for kind of an outsized beer garden, you know, public activity area compared to, you know, the size of the interior.
Yeah. Thanks.
Dennis.
Yeah, this is a pretty exciting concept. I, I do like it. I had two questions for you, though. One would be concerning the outdoor use of the Fish Alley. Right now, would this create any kind of problem for businesses who use the alley as a delivery or garbage pickup vehicle? I mean, where would, I mean, a lot of these stores would have these, these things behind them in the alley. So, where does that go if this becomes a restaurant space?
Right. My understanding is that it would actually most directly impact Crane Alley. And so, that's something that's been taken into consideration. There's a plan to relocate some of the dumpsters so they're adjacent to the segment of Crane Alley that's west of the parking deck, and, and the remainder of Fish Alley that extends to Race Street. So that, our understanding is that there is no pickup or delivery that's occurring in this alley, or in the portion that's designed to be utilized for the beer garden. And, and we did coordinate with property owner Mike Hosier, and, and he's very engaged with his tenants to ensure we're not creating conflicts.
And I, then I would have to ask, you might move the dumpsters down, but you're going to still smell them. And how does that relate to eating food in the alley?
Yeah. I mean, that, that was, the, the dumpsters are already...
I don't mind, I, I don't mind. You can solve the challenge, but I think there's a challenge here.
Yeah, they're already somewhat proximate to, to the outdoor space. It just sort of moves them to the other side, I think. And then, there are plans for visual screening. That's the other main aspect, I think, of the public right-of-way improvements, screening of the parking deck and, and screening for the dumpsters.
Now, can I ask another thing? Is it quite certain that the, the outdoor seating at the back is going to be happening? I, I see that it seems like it's sort of suggested to be the next step, that's Phase Three, and it's going to be down the line a ways. So, my question is, would it be better to have that come back to us in a year or two when, when there's actually a plan and, and that they're ready for that kind of an extension? It seems may be a little bit premature now to include it in this document, or am I wrong?
Well, the, just to be clear, Phases One and Two, Phase One is the interior renovation, and the ex, and that includes the exterior beer garden on private property, because there is a portion that's on private property.
Okay.
And then, Phase Two is, is also expected to be implemented on the same timeline, and that includes the immediately adjacent public right-of-way area. So, that is all being pursued aggressively for the spring by the developer.
Okay.
But, the, the latter phase is only for the second-story balcony or the interior mezzanine, which would add square footage to the, the overall establishment.
Yeah. So, it seems kind of odd that they would wait to build the mezzanine while they're doing remodeling of the building on the interior.
I think it was recognized that it would be more cost-effective to do it all at once, but when, in the, in the process of planning this out, and they did have drawings made, it was just a cost consideration for a first phase to, I guess, establish that the business is operating well before making that additional capital investment.
Okay.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, a couple of questions. On page three of the memo, under the Table A, it says, one of the conditions precedent is fee simple ownership of the property?
That's, that is probably a typo that we did not update in the memo, because the agreement is with the tenant.
Okay.
So, that's a great point. I would think that our attorney would have revised those conditions precedent, but...
I think in the, in the agreement, it did say tenant, but in the memo, it said fee simple ownership, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Yes, in the, in the actual agreement that council is considering, that wasn't modified to require release as opposed to fee simple ownership.
Okay.
And then, of course, the approval of the property owner is required as well.
Okay. So, this 220,000 project, Phase One, is supposed to happen in six weeks, within the first six weeks?
They already have a building permit.
Okay. And have they been to see your public health and requested a, a public health permit? That seems to take a long time sometimes.
I believe there's been active involvement in the Public Health District for many months.
Okay. And then, I was a little confused about whether the kitchen will actually be replaced. It says tenant, tenanted bar or restaurant, and/or restaurant on the first story. And then, in Table A, it says first story restaurant slash bar. Is, is the restaurant and commercial kitchen part of Phase One?
Yes, but the, I believe the food is going to be a limited option in the initial operation of the business, and it may be expanded upon in the future. So, we, we did want to provide that it could be both, but in the near term, it's going to be, you know, more of a bar, nightclub, music venue, and less of a, you know, a sit-down restaurant compared to Crane Alley. There may be additional food offerings in the future, but we try to write these portions to the agreement to be flexible.
So, in the budget for the $220,000, would that include a commercial kitchen?
Yes, it includes a certified kitchen.
Okay. And what was there for Das Cafe and The Butcher and Lacy's that doesn't exist anymore?
Right. Each successive business made some additional improvements or changes to it, but I believe when the developers began looking at this property, it was more or less a clean slate that had, you know, there was not much left to work with. It's pretty much a new kitchen, is my understanding.
And then, so just, how's that work with our TIF money? If we, I don't know if we, if we supported the other three. I think we did do something for Lacy's, I don't know how much. But, if we give TIF money to one of these businesses for a commercial kitchen, and then two years later, it's gone, and we have to do it again, how's that work?
Yeah, that is, that is an unusual circumstance, and I guess I'd be happy to discuss that with you outside of this meeting. But, just out of respect for the businesses that were involved, but when a business closes for financial reasons, the city has limited recourse by which it could pursue that, and, you know, it's certainly something we can discuss, but, you know, in general, there's not a lot of gain to the city to pursue a business that is closed for financial reasons. And it's also very unusual for property to be removed in this fashion, so.
I mean, is there any way to protect ourselves from that happening in the future? I don't expect it to happen with these guys, because they're pretty experienced, and, you know, and we need funk jazz and brass playing in our, in our downtown, so hopefully it'll go really well. But, save for other projects, is there something we should be looking at closer?
I'm, I don't believe so. I mean, literally, it's the, the physical removal of, of integrated fixtures is what, you know, has contributed to that loss, you know, from the city's perspective. We subsidize these sorts of investments because it makes the properties more tenable and active, more desirable for leasing in the future. And it's, again, it's very rare that, I'm not aware of any other circumstances where we've had that problem.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Marlin.
Just one clarification on page seven of the development agreement. Paragraph B, under loan forgiveness, can you define what conducts productive business operations of the facilities actually means?
That was the language referred, or, our TIF attorney recommended. The goal would be that they operate the business as described in the project description, and that, that property taxes and sales taxes are generated as a result of that operation.
I would suggest that that explanation be included in the agreement. Periodically, we get these redevelopment agreements with rather loose language on, on that part of the agreement that provides for loan forgiveness, but there's really no clear standard as to how to meet the thoughts and what Brandon described as an excellent metric, but it should be in the agreement.
Okay. Other questions or concerns, Mr. Madigan, and then Mr. Ammons?
So, Brandon, you talked about a return on the city's investment in how many years?
The, the break-even point was six years, and it was a, and then with a 5% discount, it was a, about 100% return on investment over the full ten.
So, how's that calculation made?
There's a table in the memo that breaks it out pretty well. You can see in Year One, and then we estimated a future, you know, that, that Phase Three occurs in 2019 in this calculation. And you can see the, where the sales tax generation increases in twenty, or first appears in 2018, and then also the property tax. We made conservative assumptions for the property tax at a 9.6% tax rate, so that assumes that the city prevails in the Carls Tax lawsuit, and that property taxes go down. So, that's the most conservative assumption we can make in this scenario. And then, for sales tax, we assumed only 60% of the figures provided by the, the developer would be new revenues. So, we're assuming that, you know, 40% of those sales tax revenues they expect to generate are not new to the city of Urbana, because there's other restaurants and bars nearby. And then, again, we assumed a 5% discount each year to account for, you know, inflation or other costs, so.
So, save me doing the math. I've been busy generating sales tax for the city with my own business lately. What is the, what is the gross revenue you're using annually to calculate the sales tax? I didn't bring my glasses either. I can't read that tiny print.
Oh, apologies. I, I don't have the gross revenue numbers there, but, you know, 16,500 is the initial year. So, that represents only 60% of the sales tax that are expected to be generated.
Okay. So, you're conservative on the sales tax generation as well when you are looking at the ROI?
Right, because we only assume that 60% of it is actually new to the locality or the, the various taxing partners. We want to assume that there's some cannibalization occurring with local businesses. So, we don't want to say every dollar that new business brings in is new when there are other establishments nearby.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I think, Mr. Ammons, you were looking to ask or say something?
Yes. So, I too look forward to a place where we can listen to jazz and invite some other jazz artists to come in and play. Would be nice to, to have that in, in the downtown of Urbana. I'm always concerned about my questions around TIF and things like that, so, and the blight that it's supposed to address, which usually occurs in poor, more economically deprived areas, which are predominantly areas for people of color. So, I'm always wondering, is there a way to tie this $92,000 of increment that any business would get, or this business would get to any sort of workforce goals or minority participation goals?
There is a portion of the agreement, this is the second time staff have included this language in an agreement. The Cohen Building was the first intended to broaden the pool of qualified candidates for construction of the proposed project.
Which page are we on?
It's on the memo. It's the...
Number three.
The third page of the memo. That describes it. Both this developer and the developer, the Cohen Building, will meet with human resource and human relations staff, as well as community development staff, to set goals for businesses owned by minorities and females, and to review the progress and good faith efforts of those established goals. This is our department's only, you know, recent initiative on this front, and we're not confident on the percentages of minority and women-owned businesses, that we can expect a developer to successfully attract to their project. So, this is intended to be a learning experience for city staff as well as we start to work proactively with developers to increase their recruitment efforts.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Roberts.
I guess I have a, a small concern. I've got, I'm going to voice it at this point, of not what's... I guess I have a, a small concern, I'm gonna, I'm gonna voice it at this point, of not what's in the, in the document, but what might come up later. And this would be to establish something that's not truly a jazz club, bar, and restaurant, but to also convert it into a gaming establishment downtown. I could imagine that, that we could see something like that coming forward from this venue. And it would be something that I think the community would have to weigh in on because we already have enough of these establishments, and having one right on Main Street does cause a concern, and I don't see that there's any way that we may not have that request come forward.
Sure. To, I guess, the main way that we've looked at this in the past is that there are, and I think council had a lot to do with this differentiation, that there's gaming halls, and then there's restaurants and bars that also have gaming machines in them. And so if we were in a situation where the primary use was clearly becoming a gaming hall and not a restaurant or a bar, I think we would, we would have the ability to pursue that under the terms of the development agreement. But maybe we could take a second look at tightening up that language.
Okay, yeah, further, yes, Mr. Smith?
Well, something like that would happen, you know, the G1 license would have to come back here for approval too, so we have that recourse. I'm, I'm ready to send it to council, if everybody else is. Okay, I'm moving to send it to council with the recommendation for approval. That's the development agreement first.
And I'd like to second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? So, Ms. Clark, do we need a?
This is just a committee.
Okay, so in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. And then the next item is the
And then I'll move ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, ordinance number two, 2017 to 11, to council with the recommendation for approval.
I'll second again.
Okay, moved and seconded, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I thought of one other question about the budget amendment. Since the third part, the Mesne balcony won't happen before July 1st, apparently, how does, does that get rebudgeted? Does that have to be rebudgeted next year if we don't use it, or does that just stay in the TIF budget?
Yeah, we, we typically budget the entire amount into a dedicated line item in the TIF. When we enter a new budget year, we treat them like capital expenses and their, or lines, and they're rebudgeted forward any unspent funds.
Because sometimes we have to approve rebudgets, is that something that would come back that we would approve again as a rebudgeting, or is that something?
Not, yeah, not, I don't, I don't believe so. I think that'd be a question for
Okay, so it's sort of automatic? Okay, I guess that would address any other concerns I might have about current agreements we have that haven't been spent out of that budget. There wouldn't be anything, it's that, I mean, the, the fund balance you provided already includes anything that we've already agreed on for other projects that hasn't been spent yet.
And that's our number one reason for always, or for budgeting the full amount and then carrying it forward. And if we, you know, were to look at the situation and want to change it, then, you know, we do it on the basis of what's available.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, would those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, and so now, now we are moving to the resolution on, regarding the interface between mental health, criminal justice, and public safety. And we do have a member of the audience who expressed a wish to speak to this item at this time, Mr. Jason Arndt.
Hello, Jason Arndt, 302 East John Street. I'll keep my comments very brief. As someone who has lost a member of his family to mental health, I strongly advise all of you to vote in favor of allocating funds for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And since I am the originator of this, might I ask Mr. Ammons to take the chair for this item?
Why, sure. Would you like me to recognize you?
Thank you, I would so appreciate that.
Mr. Jacobson?
Okay, so I, I, I won't add too much to what I said before, have, have said at previous meetings. I have taken into account, I have attempted to take into account all of the issues that were raised in our discussion, in treating this as a discussion item. I overlooked one, and I believe that Ms. Marlin said that she was going to have a friendly amendment. I'm, I'm very, this is very meaningful to me, so I appreciate, based on the discussions that we've had, my colleagues' willingness to, to consider this and move forward. And, well, I, like, I like Jason, have a family history that makes this especially meaningful to me, and I, I think probably many people have, and, and they don't necessarily discuss it a lot. So, so I want to thank everybody for considering this.
Yes, I, I would like to offer a friendly amendment regarding the importance of continued state, or adequate state funding for mental health services. So I would propose after, well, right before the last phrase, I would add, "And this commitment will include working with the Illinois General Assembly to ensure adequate funding from the state of Illinois for mental health services."
I'll accept that as a completely friendly amendment. So I'll, I'll, I'll move sending this to full council with a recommendation for approval with that amendment.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I don't want to relinquish the chair, though. Do I have to? Parliamentary rules that make me get back?
So, actually, the rest of this is pretty boring, you can have it, no. The next item on the agenda, ordinance number 2017 dash 02 dash 006, and ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23 dash 183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Hill Street between Roamine Street and Goodwin Avenue. And this is coming from Public Works.
Hi, Craig Junkriler, Assistant City Engineer, and I have Charnell Knapp with the Crisis Nursery here. I understand at the last city council meeting, there were some questions regarding the parking restrictions before you. And I'd like to provide a response, a staff response to those questions. The first question was, why can't parking be permitted on both sides of the street? The street is 25 feet wide, so in essence, if you had two eight-foot parking areas, that, that doesn't leave very much. That leaves about nine foot of space, so it's not enough space for two-way traffic on Hill Street. The second question was, can the parking on the south side in front of Crisis Nursery be permitted via signage during drop-off and pickup times? Ms. Knapp can speak to this, but I called, again, and talked to Stephanie Record, the executive director, and Crisis Nursery doesn't operate like a standard elementary school. They basically can take up, or have pickup and drop-off times anywhere between 7:00 AM and 9:00 in the evening, and even sometimes off-hours during emergency situations. And then the other question was, can the street be made one-way to accommodate parking, like what was done at Booker T. Washington School in Champaign? And again, because the pop, the pickup and drop-off times are not a designated time, it's hard to make that a one-way street for just a temporary time, like when the pickup and drop-off time area is. Making it a permanent one-way would not be something that staff would recommend for a on-street parking restriction or a situation like this. Ms. Knapp is here if you have any questions, and I know Mr. Ammons had some on that, so she can answer for Crisis Nursery.
So one of the things that, and thank you for coming, I appreciate it, and Craig, thanks for answering those questions. One of the things that has come up recently were some of those particular things that, that Craig just addressed. But I'm, I'm a bit perplexed by one of the answers in relationship to the pick-off, pickup and drop-off times. As this was being discussed, and when I came to meet with, I can't forget her name, it's been a while since I've been over there to meet with him about this, and Craig and I talked about this once before as well. I was under the impression that there was a high volume, like parents all backed up on the street trying to drop off kids type of thing, and it was creating a safety concern with children having to cross the street, but now I'm hearing that there is no such high volume. So maybe you could clarify some of that for me?
I'll try to do so. So we do have backup where you have multiple parents coming to pick up or dropping off during certain hours of the day. However, we are 24/7, so a lot of times we have emergency calls, maybe in the evenings where people are picking up outside of those normal hours. And those certain admissions might be domestic violence, or medical emergencies, or homelessness. And so that's why we can't tell you only during certain, like, school hours would we need to have the parking as such. Does that kind of answer your question?
We're getting there. So the, the peak times then, what are those times?
The peak times would be during the day, during business hours when we have the most staff. So the peak times would probably be early in the morning or right around like 5:00 o'clock, and that's just my generalization.
So for the issue that we're considering, and the inconvenience that it causes, the people who live across the street who will now have to park across the street, it would, I was much more in favor of what was going on when I thought there was like really high-volume issues, and it was creating safety hazards for, for young children. I'm not so convinced now that that's still the case. So I'm really trying to make sure that I understand what you're, what you're describing as a drop-off time, and how many people are we talking about? From this 7:00 in the morning to 9:00, you know, just, if you could give me some sort of specific times?
It's kind of hard to do specific times because we're
Drop off and pick off, drop off and pick up, just the peak times.
Of how many people you're talking?
Yeah, how many people and what times? Are we talking 7:00 to 9:00, and 4:00 to 6:00, when you have, you know, 10 cars out there, you know, that's what I'm trying to, to understand.
We're emergency childcare, so it's depending on who's calling and what times, and what emergency, and why they, why we can't stagger the times. So you might have multiple vehicles, like four or five vehicles all trying to get in or out. A lot of times clients have a hard time with transportation, and so we want to accommodate them as best we can to get the children in when there's a crisis. As well as having the children cross the road with parents is hard when you're crossing traffic, and so that's why we wanted to move to the other side as well.
Yeah, if I can speak, as far as I understood it, it wasn't the volume, it was the fact of children having to cross with their parents across the street. So that's why they pursued the parking restrictions of moving it from one side to the other.
Well, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm certainly very appreciative of everything that's done at Crisis Nursery, and what it provides to the community, in particular, where it's located, being in my ward. I'm a little concerned that I'm, maybe I misunderstood and should have asked more questions about this. I would just say that I should have. But if we're talking about, you know, four or five parents who are, you know, just getting out of the vehicle to walk the children across the street, I'm not quite sure I see this, it's not like that street is a high-traffic area where there's lots of cars passing. It's not a main thoroughway or anything like that, so I'm a little confused about parents who are actually walking their children across the street. I don't understand the safety concern.
I think the safety concern is when you have multiple children that are coming across with one parent, and you're trying to cross traffic, and when you do have cars pulling across there. So it's very, it can be very congested during certain times. And we're talking about younger children, birth up until age seven is who we're serving. So if you have one parent trying to help three children across the street, and there is cross-traffic, that was part of the reason why we asked for this.
So will parking be allowed permanently in front of Crisis Nursery?
Yes. So the parking would be moved from the north side of the street to the south side of the street?
Is there a way to have, well, we have, we may have some elderly people who live across the street on the other side, who are going to be, you know, inconvenienced to the point where they have to park across the street, carry groceries, cross the street in bad weather, all that type of stuff? Is there a way to have specialty parking in front of someone's home?
Well, the problem would be if we're on, if we move parking to the south side, and then we have special parking on the north side, then we don't have enough room, say, in an emergency vehicle situation, to be able to get those emergency vehicles through. So in essence, we don't have enough room. I mean, it's, it's too tight, so we, we have to kind of go with one or the other. When Crisis Nursery approached the city staff about it, we did ask them to follow a petition process. So that petition, they had to get over 60% of the property owners along this section from, of Hill from Roamine down to Goodwin. And they were successful in getting that, the petition, which then put it on the Traffic Commission agenda at that time.
No, I understand that, and I don't know exactly who signed the petition. So I don't want to get into, you know, who signed it if they lived on the west end of Hill Street and it wasn't really going to affect them as much as it would affect somebody else, I don't know. I'm just thinking that if we're worried, if we want people to be able to cross, and we're going to allow parking right in front of Crisis Nursery, then if there's, you know, four or five cars parked in front of Crisis Nursery, where do the, do the parents park to drop the children off? They're still going to have to have the, you know, the issue of parking, I thought, was a part of it as well. So if we, if, we're not concerned about parents parking in the, for, for long-term, it's just for short-term, right?
It would be for a short, a short-term, that they'd be parking in the front. Sometime, we also have support groups, so that would be a longer portion where parents would be parking for an hour or so.
The people who signed the, the petition, have, have you gotten any feedback, or anyone who said that they were not supportive of it?
To my knowledge, we didn't have a lot of pushback with that at all.
But I, I can speak that we did have, we did invite all residents along the street to a Traffic Commission meeting. We didn't get any opposition at the meeting, but after the meeting, I did receive notice or calls from two residents along the street that had concerns about, about this action.
So in, in a nutshell, and I'm certainly trying to be extremely sensitive to, to both sides of this. But we have a standard practice of parking currently. Is it the expansion of Crisis Nursery that's made this an issue? Because Crisis Nursery has been there for a while. Have we had any children get hurt, or get hit by a car, or anything like that, that really sort of is an impetus for, for this move?
Because of the expansion, we're increasing our capacity, and so we'll be able to accept more children. And we had the expansion because we were having to turn away a lot of people that needed our services. And so, yes, the expansion does make this an issue with, which is why we brought it at this time. We can accept more children now, so we're going to have more vehicles in the same way.
Mr. Smith?
Looking at a map of, looking at a street view of, of, of the homes on the north side of Hill Street, in the, in the block directly opposite of Crisis Nursery, I see driveways for all those homes. Is that, there are driveways for every home there with sufficient stackable space?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's not true.
You, should we pull, I can pull it up on map, we can just look, I don't, I'll do that.
Yeah, let's do that.
And are you speaking to just right across the street, or are you talking about on the entire street? And are you speaking to just right across the street or are you talking about on the entire street?
So Crisis Nursery is on the bottom of the page, of the, uh, screen here. So when you asked the question, it looks like there's a driveway for each one of these residents. Pardon me? Go east, okay. So down here, um, what we, what we did do was we did an analysis, staff did an analysis to see, would there be a loss in the number of parking spaces or parking area from one to the other? And it's a wash in this block between Matthews and Goodwin. If we have questions on, maybe we can just drop down through here so that we can see it. So this would be looking west with Crisis Nursery way down on the, on the left there. So when you get to this particular property, which is a multifamily unit, there would not be, it does not appear that there is, um, parking.
They've got parking in the back.
The back. So we could, we could check that out. You're saying back here, back here is, is where you're talking about, is that right, Charlie?
There is parking in the back there. I think that's like a six to eight unit. I don't know how many units that is for each one, but, uh, yeah, if you say it's not a, a lot of parking for all the people who would be there. But that's not my, my major issue there. I was just really trying to make sure that, uh, cause the, the bulk of the issue is going to be right in front of the Crisis Nursery, where it's located. And the people who are directly affected are going to be the ones, um, directly across the street mainly. That's the bulk of it. As you move to the, to the east, those on the south side of the street, it appears that there, there's driveways. And the multi-unit that you just described has some parking in the back. And then if you go further west, one more block on the west side of Romine.
Yeah, that, down here, the west side, this would not change. The parking, that's not part of the restrictions that we're asking.
So just the west side of Romine just stays the same period?
Stay the same.
Okay.
Yes, so it's the east side. It would be from, from Romine to Goodwin.
So basically the people who would be most inconvenienced are the duplex, the multi-family, uh, who would be, looks like there's three to four parking spots maybe in the back there, um, for them. But they would be most affected on, and whatever residence or maybe company or whatever would have to park on the south side, uh, of Hill Street.
So let me also, um, with the petition, we, city staff looked at, um, you know, the, the properties that were, that signed the petition that were okay in essence with this. Generally speaking, on the north side of the road here, it, they, they appeared to be fine. Same thing on the east, on the east on the north side. This south block though, right in here, there was, um, very little, I think, of any that had signed the petition. And I did receive a, a call from, I think it's the residents, kind of where the arrow is, that she was concerned. And then I also had a tenant on the right corner here, um, at Goodwin, and she was concerned too. Just for full disclosure.
Charlie, could you take a chair for me? I'd like, if I could directly recognize. So I, although there haven't been any accidents so far, and although they would be rare, it's an inherently dangerous situation if you have children coming out between parked cars and crossing the street. And once, such a scary thing, fortunately, no serious injury. But one of our children was, was hit by a car across the street from our house. And it was a situation where he was coming out between parked cars and the driver didn't see him in time. So if, uh, if we prevent one accident like that by moving the parking across the street, well worthwhile, in my opinion. Mr. Evans?
So certainly I don't want to have anything happen to any children trying to cross the street. Nor do I want a senior citizen to be hurt, uh, trying to cross the street. So I'm trying to balance that to see, uh, where the balance is in this. And so one of the other questions just struck me as to, uh, one of the residents asked me recently, why do we have to go all the way to Goodwin? If the concern is just right there in between Matthews and Romine?
Basically, there is a stop sign at, um, Romine and Hill. So there's, as you come down the road, you stop at Romine and Hill. That provides a, um, an avenue, once a vehicle is stopped, to be able to shift safely to one side of the road, the other side of the road. At Matthews, there is not a stop sign. So we would not want to have a shift in traffic, in parking from one side to the other. That's not, you know, you could actually drive down the road and then you might not think that that's going to happen and a motorist could actually run into a parked car. So we try to do that at basically physical locations, like you stop traffic, then you can shift.
So why can't we just put a stop sign right there?
Well, okay, so, uh, as, as an engineer, professional engineer, um, the reason for stop signs is basically for dedication of right of way. Meaning you have cars coming from direction and you want to allocate, you want to make sure that you can basically create a gap to go. Putting a stop sign up for this type of situation wouldn't be in accordance with the manual for uniform traffic control devices. So that means it doesn't follow a national guideline, national set of criteria. The risk on that, when you do, when, when, and we can do that, we could put it up. But when we do that and there is an accident and we're not following the national manual, that opens up the city to liabilities.
Can I just follow up on that? So, and you've looked at that, you've looked at the manual to make sure that it doesn't warrant a stop. Cause I was going to suggest between now and, uh, the council meeting that that be looked at. I couldn't remember if we looked at that or not.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be a reason to install a stop sign. In my professional opinion, council can override that opinion if they want to. I mean, it's your choice.
But you're saying that opens up a liability issue?
In my, in my opinion, it's not following a national guideline.
So does the presence of the Crisis Nursery, uh, have any effect on the manual?
No.
Uh, in terms of?
No.
So that's not a factor. So the council could maybe say the presence of the Crisis Nursery, in our opinion, warrants a stop sign at that block because it's a calming effect. That way you don't have people going two blocks westbound without having to stop. So maybe they're slower by the Crisis Nursery and we as a council could say, I'm just.
I'll give you my honest opinion. I, I, I feel uncomfortable with that as a professional engineer. I mean, if we were going to go to that far, I, I would actually recommend, I mean, and if this thing was, if council's leery on switching the traffic, the next step to me would be maybe making, um, to really focus in on this area right here, which is this drop off area. And maybe it, the next part would be, you leave parking to the north and you actually, um, or, or we restrict some zone there where parents can pull in. So that maybe you lose a few and then everybody else can keep their parking on the block. So you would have a zone there where there's just no parking, just so that Crisis Nursery people can come and go safely.
I certainly would like for us to explore an option that, um, uh, makes it neighborly for everybody. And it's a mutual benefit for, for both sides. Look, I, the reality for me is that the, uh, just recently, over the past week, the number of people have talked to me about this. Uh, and some of the questions and concerns about, uh, a lot of it's respecting the work that Crisis Nursery does. But it's like the expansion that's taking place, you know, why didn't you guys build, you know, build for more parking? Why didn't you plan this as you were, you knew it was coming? And so now some of the people are feeling that imposed upon, um, just me sharing you what, what I'm getting from some of the people. So I do think it would be, you know, it would be great, especially if you're saying we're not having a high volume of, 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 uh, parents who are dropping people, dropping children off. If we could do something like that, I think that would be great.
So how about staff pursues further avenues with Crisis Nursery to try to solve this problem? I mean, that's one approach.
I think that would be great. Craig, I thank you for, I know you've been working on this for a long time and, uh, I, I know this is sort of last minute for everybody. But I think if we can come to a resolution that, um, makes everybody happy and keeps, creates the safety for, for both sides, that would be ideal.
Just add to that, if I could, as chairman of the Traffic Commission, we had what was before us. We had former Alderman Lewis there, who is a property owner, uh, on the, um, the easternmost block. Who was, uh, you know, had no issue with it. So that's kind of why, that's why we ended up where we are today, supportive of the Crisis Nursery. And the other thing too, I think we need to be sensitive to, uh, the diligence that the Crisis Nursery has done here, uh, with the petition process and with repeated contacts, uh, to residents of the block requesting their support, opposition, feedback. And they got virtually nothing in, in, in terms of resistance. So that's why we are where we are here today. So, uh, but I mean, I think we ought to be sensitive to, um, you know, the Alderman of the wards' concerns. And I think we ought to explore all possibilities, including, uh, maybe council, um, considering a, a stop sign or other, uh, calming measures on the block, not to, um, to inconvenience folks if we don't have to. And maybe another solution here is we change the parking for a period of time. And then the Crisis Nursery or the city or some combination thereof looks for a way to expand that parking area in front of their, uh, in front of their facility to alleviate, you know, much of this long term.
Mr. Smith? Yeah, I actually don't share the MUTCD type approach on stop signs. I've seen them be quite effective, uh, for slowing and controlling traffic in certain neighborhoods. So I personally would prefer to see a stop sign at Hill and Matthews so that we can change the parking on the one block that's most critical. Where I think the children's safety is paramount and more important than anything else, particularly from a vision zero point of view. And, and leave the parking on Hill between Matthews and Goodwin as it is. Uh, I think the stop sign frankly solves the issue. And, uh, it is, it's not a pretty one from an engineering point of view. But we've passed stop signs in the past to help traffic situations and they have worked in every case that I know. So that, that's my, that's where I would prefer to see this go. So, um, what is the, uh, what is the group's pleasure as far as in action to take? Are we, uh, deferring again or?
Is there a way for us to look at the feasibility of both of those? What would be, uh, I think you've, have you considered the stop sign and the, and the expansion of the, uh, the drop off zone there?
Staff will consider the wishes of council.
Well, and what I would say is no, we really didn't because the, the, the staff recommendation was that it didn't fit the national standard. So that really wasn't any kind of consideration at the commission level. My suggestion would be that we, uh, move this forward to the council with no recommendation. And that gives the staff time to, to research and opine on some of these other issues. And then we can make a determination next week or we can hold it. But we can move it forward and then be ready to do some kind of final action, whatever that may be.
Mr. Smith? So a question would be, is there sufficient time to come up with some answers between now and next Monday? Or do you need a little more time?
I, I think, I, staff wise, I can make it work. Um, I think it's just whether or not Crisis Nursery has the time to meet with staff.
Um, I'm sure staff.
We will make it work.
Okay, then I will move this to council with no recommendation.
I would prefer that it stay here, um, so that we can iron out whatever concerns that we have and then move it forward. But, you know, that would be my, my preference. Because if it goes to council, um, even without a recommendation for approval, I believe that puts, uh, that puts pressure on it to move, uh, once it gets to council, so.
I mean, if I may speak, I mean, one option that staff could pursue that would be maybe in compliance with the MUTCD is to rotate. It's something to look at, rotate Hill and Matthews. So in essence, you would stop traffic on Hill, but you would let Matthews go north, south free. Right now there's stop signs on Matthews as you approach Hill. So you would remove those and put those on Hill. That puts it in compliance with the MUTCD, you're just changing the direction of the stop signs.
Craig, you're a genius, man, there you go.
That's something that staff can look into.
Okay.
And I'm not a genius, but.
I like the idea myself, um, and I appreciate the technology to see, um, very, very specifically, especially those who, cause my biggest concern was that the people right across the street would be affected. And I've walked that block and it seems like, I don't know, I think I remember one or two of those houses not actually having a, a driveway. It's kind of hard to see through some of the trees there. But I think that's the thing that was, uh, really important to me. So if we can address that, um, then I think we will be fine.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I think that's a creative solution. Craig, I appreciate that, you're thinking out of the box a little bit on that. Um, and I think that we probably would want to hear from our city attorney about, you know, how important is it to meet national standards? And what, what, uh, what, um, what might be the situation for the city if there was a litigation?
Council?
If somebody were to be injured, after experts or when experts testify in connection with whether there's liability, the key question is going to be, are there state or federal standards which apply? And even our expert, if we hired one, would have to say yes. And then the next question is, does this comply with those standards? And the answer is going to be no. And then the question, more questions will be left to the jury, whether the city's failure to comply is the proximate or direct cause of injury, uh, leading to the damages suffered by the individual. Then it's up to a judge if there's no jury or a jury. But clearly you do, and I, I'm not saying not to change, I just am providing a resource. But clearly you do increase the potential for liability, whether that's big or not. I mean, I, you know, it, all it takes is one accident to test it. But you do, you definitely create a higher risk for the city.
So, but Craig, you're saying that we are in compliance if we change?
I, I was saying that that could be a possible solution, but I would want to have time to look at that.
Okay.
Explore that.
So I would love to talk to you over the next few days about that, or whenever you get some information from us.
I would.
Mr. Maggie?
I would just suggest that we just hold this in committee then. I mean, there are too many variables here and.
Okay.
With all due respect to council, this is, uh, the world we live in. Thank you lawyers. You know, it's not that we're not putting a stop sign where there should be one, it's kind of the other way around. We're putting an extra one in where maybe the national standard doesn't say, you need that. But given all that and all the variables involved, I would just suggest we hold it in committee.
Okay.
Second.
So, okay, so we do have a motion, it was a suggestion, but I'll take it as a motion to hold in committee in a second. If there's no further discussion, in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, okay, we are holding in committee.
Can I ask a young lady a quick question? The, what's your name again?
Sharnell.
Sharnell, so, um, if, if you're going to stick around for a minute, if there was some, uh, particular person, is it Stephanie that I should speak to at Crisis Nursery?
Yes, Stephanie.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business, an ordinance, ordinance number 2017 dash zero two dash zero zero nine, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 25 Legacy Tree Program from Public Works.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we've been working through the Legacy Tree Program for several years now. We have 16 trees recognized as legacy trees. I have probably assessed about 24 or so trees. And, um, what I've been finding is there are a number of trees that I think are good candidates for the Legacy. for the Legacy Tree that don't meet our rigid condition standards. So I thought I'd just briefly go through our process, because it is a little bit detailed. We get a nomination on these trees, and I go through a fairly lengthy assessment that includes looking at the tree itself, its height, its width, its diameter, whether it's near utilities and has the potential of being trimmed or harmed by the utility companies if it's too close. I look at its condition. So the way I assess the condition is, I look at the crown and the structure of the tree. I look at the scaffold branches. I look at the trunk, if there's any damage. I look at the root system. So there's components of this condition. It's not just looking at the tree to see, okay, I think it's a good-conditioned tree. And what I've been finding, a lot of these are barely floating above good. In an urban situation, there's usually a number of things that mark it down a little bit, whether it's girdling roots or restricted root space, or some kind of leaf spot that it has. Our urban trees, generally speaking, are stressed. In fact, our inventory, if you look at our inventory, about 74% of our inventory is listed as fair. Only about 18% of our trees are listed as, as good. So I'm suggesting that we loosen our condition factor for our assessment in our Legacy Tree Program, so we can open up the door a little bit and include a larger portion of our forest as potential candidates for our Legacy Program. I do want to point out that it, it does not affect our safety rating, our risk assessment. We still do a risk assessment for these trees, and quite frankly, a number of the trees that are listed as fair are rated as low risk. So a lot of times, they go hand-in-hand, a lot of times they don't. The sample, or the example that I provided in the memo, is a hackberry tree at 1904 East Main. And there's other trees I'll show you here in a little bit as well. But the 1904 East Main Hackberry is an unusual situation, where we have an arborist taking care of that tree and keeping an eye on it. So it's an older tree. It is not in as good a shape as a lot of our trees that are already legacy trees, but it's being well cared for, and it's being kept under close eye by a professional arborist. So in that situation, and the tree's target zone is an open area. It's out in the yard of the Friends Meeting place, and so the tree's very safe, because there's a situation here where an arborist is keeping an eye on it. But yet, it's only fair condition. Just a few other trees that I wanted to show you that is in fair condition, that are pretty prominent trees in the community. This is a bar oak on Lincoln Avenue by the bus stop. Trees rated in fair condition. This was the other tree that I stopped short of taking to the tree commission, because it was under the good-conditioned rating. This tree was just hit by lightning last summer, so maybe that was an omen. It also pointed out that a bus stop under a large tree like this by itself is probably not the best location for a bus stop. But this is a grove of trees right across from the Dart factory there on East Main Street. We believe these are big grove trees. They're rated, generally speaking, as in fair condition. The tree over here on the right is our tallest tulip tree on West Michigan Avenue, another tree rated in fair condition. And then, of course, the tree that most everybody knows is in Urbana, Urbana's oldest oak, has been nominated by half the owners. This is co-owned, also rated as a fair-conditioned tree. Now, some of these trees, if I go into a detailed assessment, I'm sure I'll find they're in a little better than fair condition. Our inventory was more generalized when the gentlemen were going around and inventorying our trees. This, this tree itself is also cared for by a professional arborist, thanks to Friends. They care for all their trees on their property. So my memo suggests that we change the ordinance to allow fair trees, or trees in fair or better condition, to be considered as potential Legacy Tree candidates.
Ms. Merlin?
Thanks, I would support that, but I was just surprised to see how large of percentage that our trees are just in fair condition. Is that typical?
It's typical in urban settings. We're not unusual. Now, I was very concerned at the beginning of our inventory about that whole process. They get a point off, if you will, on the condition assessment, just because they're urban trees.
Oh, they're handicapped.
That's the way, that's the way Davey, the company consultant that we hired to do our tree inventory, looks at them. It's a professional subjectivity, if you will. But there's some sense to it. Our trees are, generally urban trees are in impervious areas. They have limited root space. They're stressed to begin with compared to trees out in open space. Now, we do have trees in open spaces and wide parkways. They aren't nearly as stressed as some in the, in the more narrow parkways.
And Mr. Roberts?
Well, Mike, I, I really actually appreciate your reconsideration of the standards for Legacy Trees. I thought it was awfully high bar, and it would seem to me that trees that had value in our community, not just because they were huge, but because they might have other associations, would just really be hard to get them to the status of Legacy Tree. And then if you have the consideration of making a rein inspection of them, I think we're going to be satisfied with, that the condition is not poor or dangerous in some manner. So I think this allows more trees to get recognition, which I think is the whole point of having recognition in the first place. If all we could ever do is have five trees in Legacy Tree Program, it would be kind of pointless. So, so I support this, and, you know, I'd be willing to make the motion that we adopt your suggestions.
Okay, I believe Mr. Emmons also wished to speak.
Yeah, how old is that, that oak tree?
How old is the oak tree?
Yeah.
It's over 250 years old. So it was, it was here just before the American Revolution.
So as far as the, the program, so Dennis's point is well-taken, that if you only, if you have such high standards, then only certain trees fall into the Legacy Program. The Legacy Program protects trees that they can't be cut down for a length of time, or ever. How would you categorize that? What's the length of time or the protection for the Legacy?
That's a very good question. The Legacy Program is to protect trees through acknowledgement. So the idea behind the program is to bring our trees, our important community trees, out to the forefront of our community, to have our community speak up about these trees when there's development or potential harm. So it's not a hard and fast, the city says you can't touch that tree. It's more of a acknowledgement. Now, what we do, if, if a citizen nominates a tree and approves of their tree on their private property to become a Legacy Tree, then it has to be delisted to be considered for removal, unless, of course, it's a, an immediate danger. The ordinance covers that. But if it's not, and a, a new property owner comes in and wants to take that tree down, they have to come back, apply for a delisting permit, which requires then for me to call a tree commission meeting and allow the neighborhood to speak about that particular delisting permit or that tree.
So is this commission a, does it have the authority to deny the new homeowner the ability to cut down the tree?
No.
I just wanted to understand how it works.
It's a shaming ordinance.
Oh.
So, yes, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I have to say that while I worked at the University Press on campus, I used to really enjoy a huge sycamore tree that was in the field between the press and the stadium area, yeah, the stadium. And it blew my mind to find one during the summer, while people were gone from the campus. The tree was cut and removed, and it turned out that that was, just happened to be in the direct line between the, the chiller plant that they were putting in to add cooling units to the rest of the campus. And why they couldn't find a way of circumventing the roots, or, you know, you know, or relocating the line, I don't know. I guess that's engineering, and engineering tops, tops arborism or something, I guess. But, so it doesn't mean, I mean, I, there are some excellent trees out there that we're probably going to lose on private property, that we'll have no say about ultimately, but perhaps indeed, like, like Eric mentioned, if we can bring the attention of the landowner to the fact that these trees have value, and convince them to support them as a Legacy Tree, if, if they qualify to do so. There are trees being taken down near Liel Park that, 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 it's just a shame to see really large trees taken down in the neighborhood. Let's have more trees listed rather than fewer.
We do have a motion and a, and a second. I'll, I'll just add a comment. I'm so glad that we're better than the university. The university's treatment of trees is a disgrace. The, okay, any further discussion in favor of the motion to move to council with a recommendation for approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's done.
Thank you.
Resolution number 2017-02-010R, a resolution approving a gas main relocation agreement with Ameren Illinois Company, North Lincoln Avenue at Olympian Drive, from Public Works.
Good evening. What you have before you is a gas relocation agreement that basically states that the gas main has to be relocated on Lincoln Avenue up by Olympian Drive. It's currently in a private easement. We purchased right-ofway in this area. The private easement pre-exists the right-ofway we purchased. Thereby, per franchise agreement, we're responsible to relocate this gas main to the tune of about a quarter million dollars. I think we've talked about this in the past. But the agreement before you then would allow for that gas main to be relocated within the existing right-ofway we purchased, at our expense. This would cut down on extra expense to put the gas main on private property beyond the right-ofway, which we successfully talked Ameren out of doing and not doing that. The perhaps possible long-term liability could be if this gas main would ever have to move again, but as the memo states, we've designed the roadway, we've purchased the right-ofway today to build two lanes in the future, 10 years, 20 years, 100 years from now, there may be four lanes. If there's more than four lanes in 1,000 years, then maybe you have to move the gas main, but it probably has to be replaced anyway, and I'm exaggerating to make a point. So I think it's a very low risk, but I recommend that we support this relocation.
Ms. Merlin?
I move that we send Resolution number 2017-02-01R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Roberts?
All right, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just was going to say, we save money, right?
Yes, we do.
How much?
I didn't compute the easement cost. I really didn't. I mean, we didn't want to go that route, but it would have been tens of thousands more.
Okay, so, no-brainer. I'm sorry, Charlie, it's my political inclination. I'm always looking left. Mr. Roberts?
Can I ask one small thing about one of the diagrams? So I understand what, what's happening with the pipes. You have Exhibit A, you have actually a couple of Exhibit As, but I guess it would be page three. Yeah, page three of three, it actually says that. The bottom image shows that when the pipe comes back into alignment with the old pipe, there's an offset. And I can't figure out if that offset is a vertical offset, or is it a horizontal offset? And I'm wondering if it's a vertical offset, because if we see the existing ground line above in a dotted line, how does the, what's moving the, the liquid in the pipe up two and a half feet, or whatever, like a foot and a half, to jump, to jump the, into the old pipe again?
I suspect that's maybe a drafting.
Anomaly.
Anomaly, let's call it that. The pipes obviously are going to connect and be.
That's what I thought, but I mean, I'm looking at this thing and I see.
I understand why you would, why it would come to your attention, but no, they'll be reconnected, so.
All right, hey, otherwise, I'm happy we're doing it.
Okay.
I just want it to work, that's all.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I want to update council on one matter. Work is, is moving forward, and looking at the contractor's schedule, he does want to close Lincoln Avenue between Oaks Road and Olympian Drive this coming Monday, so it'll be March 6. In a host of discussions I've had with various folks, we have met with, spoken with the Summer Township Road Commissioner. He has agreed that if Olympian Drive was open, that would route all the traffic on North Lincoln Avenue to Fort Harris Road. That would be acceptable to him, knowing that the existing old Lincoln Avenue between Oaks Road and Olympian Drive will be closed between now and the road opening. So we're going to open Olympian Drive Monday, March 6, and now traffic can go east-west on Olympian to Lincoln, and only go north on Lincoln Avenue up to Fort Harris. Again, through traffic can't go south into town. But at least it's an improvement for east-west traffic in that area for folks to get in around, and many people have asked about trying to avoid the traffic, excuse me, the train delays at Fort Harris, so this would deal and help with that. So we'll do a remodified press release here this week. The county and Champaign staff are supportive of this move also, so that's what's going to happen.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
Well, you've made me very happy, because this is something I think has long been due, so I'm, I'm all for it, and I'm glad we finally got the, the other folks along with our thinking, in line with our thinking. So I really appreciate the efforts made to make this happen. For those who haven't experienced Olympian Drive, it's been used by bicyclists for some time. It is a beautiful surface, very well-built, very nice to cross, and it does get you past the train tracks very nicely, so.
Any other expressions of joy? Yes?
Yeah, I would just say that the rest of us haven't broken the law by riding on a closed road, so.
We have sanctuary bicyclists. Okay, any, any other expressions of joy, witticisms? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's done. Next item is Resolution number 2017-02-011R, Resolution approving and authorizing execution of a local agency agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation Airport Road, Willow Road to Cunningham Avenue, Public Works.
So we have a, we have a current agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the receipt of economic development program funds, and also truck access route program funds. There was a deadline that the construction work had to be awarded by January 1. We ran into some difficulties securing right-aways and easements, but we have since that time secured those, and we're actually finaling plans at this very minute. And we tend to go out to bids here in March. But as a result of the January deadlining, deadline coming and going, there is a revised agreement, which we're asking the resolution be passed forward, which would authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver on behalf of the city of Urbana.
Mr. Madigan?
I would move that we forward this to the council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further, any discussion, or further discussion in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So next we have Resolution number 2017-02-012R, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the city of Urbana and the University of Illinois, specifically agreement to collaborate with graduate students from the Illinois School of Architecture in creating visual screening structures to be used in the mini-park located at the northeast corner of Broadway Avenue and Water Street, and Public Works.
Thank you.
We've been, uh, working on, uh, renovating this park since the, uh, agreement was proposed to sell off, uh, five feet at the north end of that park, which actually turned out to be nine feet because the property line was actually in the park four feet. So, it leaves us with a very narrow, about a twenty-foot-wide space there between Water Street and the parking lot. And so the, uh, the concept design we developed has some screening structures, uh, where you have that path that's going to cut through the park so that we can create some visual separation. We're not looking at a lot of space. So we're going to be doing, uh, a structural screening. About the last, two years ago, Mike started a relationship with the, um, architecture department to take some of our, uh, logs from street trees that were removed to mill into lumber and utilize the wood. And that developed into, uh, a discussion on getting involved in, in some real-world way for students. And this project was on the, um, the drawing board at the time. And so we began discussion with the professor that is, uh, in charge of this graduate study program. This is a, uh, an example of some of the work that they've done that's currently on display in Temple Bule. Work they did last semester. That's going to go out, uh, into the courtyard that you can see just behind it through the glass there. That, that bench is actually going to be mounted on top of an old concrete bench to, uh, make it, uh, a little more of an art piece, as well as functional. And so what we're looking at is that area that's just north of the path. When I drew the plans up, I put in these three screening structures using, uh, probably more conventional means in, in my mind. And so what we've been discussing is, uh, allowing the students to have a little more freedom to come up with something a little more creative. It may not be in a straight line like that. But, uh, Mike and I have met now with that class twice with the students to talk about it. We met on-site today so they could get a feel for this park. But in order to, uh, move forward, we have to have an agreement that's going to be signed by both the city and the university.
Any, uh, questions, comments? Ms. Marlin?
Will the city install this structure?
Yeah, the way it's, um, set up is they'll design it and they'll build it, uh, modular, uh, construction on campus. And then, uh, when we're at a point ready to install it, we'll accept delivery and we'll be, uh, cast with the actual installation.
What kind of input do you have into the design and the, um, structure, that actual functionality of the piece?
Uh, Mike and I have met with the class twice, like I said, to, to give them input on what, um, we are looking at. Uh, and they've asked questions on what kinds of things they might also put into, increase the functionality of it. And, um, they are going to then come up with, uh, I guess they're breaking it into four groups in that class. They're going to make a presentation to Streetscape this Friday to give like an overall concept plan of what they're doing. And then Mike and I are going to be involved more with them to zero in on one design that the class then would all work together to, uh, construct. At that point, before construction begins, uh, we've asked that they come and make a presentation to city council.
So they'll have guidance as far as designing it so it'll hold up to the potentially, the kind of use it's going to get in a park like this with kids climbing over it and people sitting on it?
The professor has, uh, some experience, uh, doing this in, in, uh, where was he at? Mike goes, "South America"?
Okay, so they've actually built things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Further, uh, discussion?
I move to sentence to counsel a recommendation for approval.
Second?
Okay, moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Ms. Marlin. Any further discussion? If not, please signify by approval by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And there being no further business before this counsel, I declare we are adjourned.